I call this retreat of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Those of you who please call the board. Ms. Hummel, Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Zombi?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Dr. Beers?
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to let everyone know that Ms. Hummel recently called and she is on her way, I expect, momentarily. May I have a motion to approve the budget retreat agenda, please? Madam Chair, may I approve the agenda?
Sorry.
Go ahead. Second round of discussion. So as we call the board to... Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Zombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Before we get into the budget discussion and hear from Dr. Heron and staff about what we can look forward to in this year's budget discussion, we have a few disclosures. Mr. Kelly?
As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2018-2019 school budget because my wife is an employee at those bases in schools. However, I believe I am able to participate in the consideration of a vote on the budget fairly and in the public's interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And I would like to add that as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2018-2019 school budget because I am an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of a vote on the budget fairly and in the public's interest. All right. Thank you. Dr. Heron, before I turn it over to you, I'd just like to let everybody know, thank everybody for their hard work in rescheduling this event. We originally were supposed to have this on Saturday and now we're just before a regularly scheduled meeting. So with that in mind, I'll hand it over to you and hopefully we can...
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're going to present some of our needs for the upcoming year. We're looking forward to having some guidance from the board as to preferences for some of the items that we present this evening. I'd be glad to introduce Ms. Barnes, our Chief Financial Officer. Will you take your time to see one of Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, the board members, and Dr. Heron. During this evening's retreat, I, with the support of my colleagues, will be presenting and discussing information on fiscal year 2019 budget experting in our division. So here's an overview of this evening's discussion that I'm prepared to cover with you. First, I'll remind you of the state's requirements for developing the budget and will provide a brief overview of this year's budget process. Then I'll share with you some of the data that we have regarding our historical funding. I have some information to share, we could share with you regarding our local composite indices and how they've changed for the new biennium, which of course has a direct impact on our funding from the governor's proposed budget that was published on December 18. Following the info on the LCI, it's information from Governor McColl's proposed budget. This information will provide you with a base which we can begin to set budgetary priorities. We do have some salary adjustment recommendations and scenarios that we will discuss that I learned to report to the board. We also will review the projected increase in the cost for our current healthcare funding. After this, we'll go through our departmental staffing requests as well as the individual departmental costs that are related to personnel. As you've gone through this process before, this is just a reminder that State Code Section 22.1-22 requires the superintendent for the approval of the school board must provide an estimate of the amount of money that is considered to be needed to support the public schools in the division, and that the budget must be set up for each major classification or category that's in the national level of education. This also reminds us that as a very thorough conference, we are determined that we have the needs to support the schools and the district school division. The State Code Section 15.2-2503 requires that longer before April 1st each year, we must approve a budget of needs to pass on to our government bodies, both Williamsburg and James City County. So between now and April 1st, we must determine where our needs are and the level of funding that is necessary to support those needs. While developing the budget, we use the current strategic plan, principles, and priorities to guide the development of the budget to ensure that the goals align with the plan and that it supports the needs and goals of the students and taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. So our process. In October, we began collecting input from each of the school principals and each department's administrators. At that time, they entered their requests into our financial system. Once I joined the division in mid-November, HR and finance, as well as the assistant superintendents met with each cost center manager individually to discuss the requests and determine their needs. And in December, we began discussing and evaluating the cost center requests with the superintendent senior leadership team to ensure that what we present to you is indicative of necessity. This leads us to this evening. We're presenting the items that were determined to be necessary to the divisions so that we can gather your opinions as to how those need strictly prior to our targets in the coming months. As we look back over the past 10 years, as you can see, now on September 30th, 2008, the division's enrollment was 10,248 students and has grown by 1,229 students as of September 30th, 2017. We're expecting to continue to grow by an additional 15 students, and this is based on the future think load projection. The most likely projection shows the division grows by 129 students. The low projection is going within 1% for the last six years, and we use that number because we don't want to overestimate enrollment since much of our state funding is contingent upon the number of students enrolled. And if it's overestimated, the risk of budgetary shortfall is increased. And I do need to mention that these numbers come from the Duncan Clear preschool. So this slide simply shows our enrollment by level, and it's fluctuated very slightly, but it's shown a steady growth over the last decade. In 2008, the elementary schools had 4,568 students and grown by 450 students as of 2017, and are expected to lose 11 students in 2008 based on the future think load projection. In 2008, the high schools had 3,397 students and grew by 422 students in 2017, and were expected to gain 32 students in 2018. In 2008, the middle schools had 2,286 students and they've grown by 557 students and were expected to lose 6 students each year. Just as a reminder, the 2,000 numbers are derived from future think load projection. Looking at the history of our state funding, we're looking back to 2009 as we have in previous years because that was the year that the recession made its initial impact. And until fiscal year 18, our funding was at a level that was less than that of 2009. Now, the aggregate provides the appearance that the funding level is going to soar, but by breaking it out by the rough average per pupil, we're receiving $314 less per pupil than we were in 2009. So the revenue has declined and we're also faced with increased mandates. But Williamsburg James City County has been fortunate to receive additional students. Otherwise, we'd be looking at less than that. In fact, I pulled the DOE's calculation to look at incorporates the governor's budget, that surprise budget, rather than looking at the rough estimate of $314 per pupil. And if our enrollment was 10,249 as it was in 2009, our state revenue with fiscal '19 would be $29,818,266, which is almost $33 million less than it was in 2009. This leads us to the discussion of the governor's budget that was released on December 18th, 2017. The new composite indices for Williamsburg and James City County were made available in November, and these indices are for the next biennium covering fiscal year 2019 and '20 and will go into effect in July of 2018. Williamsburg has dropped slightly by .0044, while Dr. James City County grows by .0016. Just to note, .8 is the maximum. That's the eye. The composite index is a state's measurement of each locality's ability to pay for public education. So the formula takes into consideration the changes in property values and taxes, the local income and retail sales, and compares this to that for the entire state. And much of our funding is derived by the per pupil cost multiplied by 1 minus the composite index. So theoretically speaking, the lower the composite index, it should lead to additional funding. While a higher composite index would result in less state funding, as the LCI increases, the state funding goes down with the expectation that the locality will be able to contribute more. And the LCI is supposed to be able to tailor the wealth of the locality. If it goes up, the locality is to be ahead in preschool. And this is just our historical review of our composite index from 2001 through 2014. Williamsburg has dropped from consistent .8 for 16 years and has gradually dropped to .77.3. Williams County has been a little more volatile and has fluctuated from .64 to .4 in 2001, dropping to .526 in 2009 at the beginning of recession, but is somewhat stable around .56 with the next biennium leading at .56, .57. So moving forward, with the governor's budget, the General Assembly went into session last Wednesday, January 10. Just to note, this will be the first year of the new biennium, and the session will be a long session. The last day of the regular session ending March the 10th. The members of the General Assembly will determine what portions of Governor McColl's budget they wish to keep, modify, or eliminate. And after the recess on March 10th, they may reconvene again on April 18. So as we look at this, the other divisions for which I've had the portion to work have actually designated sales tax as a state funding, where we here in Williamsburg James City County were unique in that we consider sales tax as part of our local funding, so we don't count it as the state revenue. According to the governor's budget, that a portion derived from the state's collected sales tax has gone from $12,875,248 to $13,088,330,000 with an expected increase of $212,783. The next is the state revenue. The S of P funding is expected to increase by $897,306, while the categorical or incentive revenue is expected to decrease by $44,201. But this shouldn't alarm us because it's often shifts between the two pots just depending on what the legislature wants to present. But the most important thing to note is that we should receive an additional, based on the governor's budget, we should receive an additional $1.648, which represents an increase of 2.5%. This leads us to the non-deductible increases. As a reference to some discussion on healthcare over a later point, I did include this in our healthcare cost increases as a non-deductible increase, but I've included the contractual increase for our obligations to new horizons, our general liability insurance, and the cost of staffing operations at James River Middle School. I've also included the offsetting decrease for the contribution rate with VRS, the Virginia Retirement System. These were adopted by the VRS Board of Trustees, and the VRS Board has certified the rates. So we're looking at a reduction with the rates for fiscal '19 and '20. So we'll see a savings, or we should see a savings of $496,456. So this leaves us with a net increase in expenditures of $182,700. And on the previous slide, we saw that the make up for the state revenue, but we're experiencing a loss in some of our other revenue. We're expecting this light increase in our NPA revenue, about $10,000. And then the trend for our building rental residential revenue is declining to about $25,000. Plus, our custodial staff no longer be cleaning Thomas Nelson Community College. So that means that while we won't need new staff, custodial staff at the middle school, we're also not receiving revenue from Thomas Nelson, and that's about $28,000. So when we look at the biennial budget projection, that was actually the proposed budget that's online for James City County, now they've approved fiscal year '17 and '18 on that budget, but they also included '19 and '21 in those budgets. So note that this could change, depends on their taxing and should their revenue projections fall short. So that being said, I'm looking at the published budget and including the proportion of the city, we're looking at proposed increase of $5,613,703. So that leaves us, when we take away the non-deductibles, that leaves us with a net of $4615,680 with which to generate As we move forward, our enrollment drives our funding, as well as the need for additional resources when enrollment continues. So we have three options to use for determining enrollment numbers. We have the number that the governor's staff has allocated in the temporary budget, which is always much higher than reality and so is the actual enrollment. So we have two projections, the future think low projection, which has been only 1% since 2004 for the last six years, and we have the future think most likely projection, which is slightly more aggressive. So when budgeting, we use the conservative because as a division, we don't want to overstate it, expect it to grow, and then be caught in shortfall, which also would be cratered and compounded because we've been required resources and additional staff to accommodate a larger enrollment number. Also listed is our division's approved core staffing allocation. So although we're projecting the low projection, a gain of only 15 students, the way that the enrollments falling on our staffing ratio is we actually need one additional teacher in the elementary school level, six additional teachers at the high school level, but can be four teachers from the middle school level. Therefore, we've determined that three new teachers are needed to be our core staff needs. So looking at the future think most likely in the governor's projection, we need one teacher in the elementary school, seven in the high school, and one from the middle school. So therefore, we're asking for four teachers that could be as reserved contingency. So this slide just shows a combination of the net beginning of the $4615,680, then subtracts the cost of the three teaching positions that will be needed for the low enrollment projection, plus the four teaching positions that would be needed as a reserve or contingency. So the $4615,680 minus $525,000 for the teaching positions leaves us with $490,680 to consider other initiatives. And this leads us to the additional needs of our special education programs. Please welcome to the floor an area that is growing in our population is our English learner population. Looking at school year '9, '10, the EL population was 199 students, and this has grown to 711 students and has grown by 83 in our current school year. So this creates 712 students over the last nine years. Mr. Paul, we'll discuss this area and the divisions we've been considering. Welcome to your Madam Chair, Dr. Heron.
As you can see, WJCC's English learner population has grown significantly over the past eight years. While the number of students enrolled in our school has increased, the predominant that's enrolled by language has stayed consistent in Spanish, Mandarin, and Arabic throughout the course. The Virginia Standards of Quality requires a minimum staffing ratio of one ESL teacher for every 59 English learners. Please keep in mind that this is the minimum requirement and does not take into account the varying needs of students with lower language proficiency, interrupted education, and adjustment into our community. We have seen an increasing number of Ls with lowered English language proficiency level, also members of ELP. As you can see here, 63% of our all WJCC Ls are level 3 or below. 38% of our Ls are level 2 or below. 85% of our K2 ELP population are at proficiency level 3 or below. This is a significant number because we know from numerous studies that states that students who cannot be on grade level by grade 3 are less likely to graduate in the long term. Mr. Paul, can you just educate us on the public on level 3, 2, and does everybody just know what that is? Okay? Thank you, sorry. So each minor level talks about how much they can survive in English. So the first is entry, and then emerging. It includes our students that have very little resources with reading, writing, and listening. The level 1 students, for 20, have no English skills. They require a lot of attention from direct instruction. Level 2 have slept more in, communicate subtly in reading and writing, but their output is significantly better. When it gets to level 3 and 4, the output, the ability to communicate writing in orally increases. Students are more independent, but they're still not at the level where they're fluidly reading English. They receive less services than monitored students, which are level 5 and above. So level 5 and above is switching. Yes, we call them now monitored students. There's three years that students are monitored. There are no one received direct services for months. Probably touch base with them, make sure that they're raised around target here.
How many levels are there?
We have level 1 to 4 in three years of monitoring. Thank you. 88% of what, sorry, unless I'm mistaken, when I'm... 88% of our high school Ls are English Ls. It's also significant because this affects the young students that can graduate on time.
So how many students would that be?
I will get the numbers for that. How many students are at level 1? So our numbers of students that are level, let's say, level 1 high schoolers is 144, level 2 high schoolers is 126, and level 3 in high school is 170. So why do we think that our high school students don't speak English? Very, very
So a significant proportion of the English learner populations in high school.
We have a significant proportion in high school, and we'll discuss it later, but we also have a significant proportion in English. And Mr. Paul, do our English learner learners have the ability to stay with people longer? Yes, they do. They can stay with people like you.
Have general speaking and are they new to American schools?
Many times, they are new to American schools.
So they've come from probably another countries with...
Other country, and they're not English. Correct. They've had English education, may make them left school in their home country, and for example, rich grade, but they're not just in that, like we have the education.
So the students that are in the EL, the academy that takes place at all different schools, what level?
Level 1 and 2 students.
Level 1 and 2. Is there a duplication of another teacher showing us?
So as a student, over the course of the year, may change a level. So is there a... They don't change a level. At the very, very end of the school year, students are given access exams, and that discusses a level, and put into a certain scale, a level. So there's no duplication in terms, they're all students. This is obviously one of our business areas that we need to come to academic achievement. It's one of our gap opportunity areas, which is why we're putting some focus on our enrollment process, making it more... So this slide illustrates that the standards of quality represent a minimal number of ESL teachers required to provide services for our Ls. Staffing is a ratio that we take into account our level of ELP 1 and 2, their need for increased support. Some school divisions choose to use a level of need model to staff ESL teachers, weighting the level of support for those students at level 2 or below, higher than students at level 3 or 4, and monitored students. The Department of Defense Education Activity, the DODA, has a method of weighting L students based on the level of need, as called standard. For example, students that are EL level 1 are weighted 3 points, EL level 2 are 2 points, levels 3 and 4 are 1 point, and students that are in monitored status are .5. They don't receive direct instruction, direct services, but they are monitoring ESL students to make sure that they're continuing their progress. Our current ESL population is 711 students. If we use this model to rate our students, our enrollment rate could be 1,014 students.
Mr. Paul, is this related? Is this similar to how the funds for disabilities?
I think that they have a number of minutes. It's similar. There are other models that do number of minutes, and that is the change in the higher number, the DODA model. So as you can see here, the number of students, our English learner at a high school, our students that are in grade 2, 3, or James River, Matty Bailey, CCB, EMS, and Lafayette. And just to let you know that Lafayette is just the number of students, it is not the number that is included with the number of 10.
So explain the axis versus the...
So the number up is how many students there are. So for example, CCB, point vertically, number of Ls that we have in WJCC is 48, and the number of weighted Ls is 84. But one thing that's interesting to note is that we may have 86 students at James River, but because of the language level of those students, their weighted is 152.
State requires standard quality minimum 1.1, ratio 29. Which are...
We are currently with 12 ESL teachers exactly fitting 159 ESL here. If we employ the DODA model and we rate our students with that 1,014, 2, 52, we, ESL teachers would be...
That's assuming several hundred percent of our students. The other question, I'll read you.
Any other questions on the Ls or the numbers? Obviously, we're limited by school. You can say there's whatever made in some schools and others not necessarily the basic numbers given the level of need of the dog to do as well.
Just to make sure I understand. So if we use the DODA model, we would have 17 additional total. We have five additional, five additional. So we currently have 12 ESL teachers with the 159 unweighted. If we weighted, we'd have a total of 17.
Glad I asked.
Yes.
Well, not on that percentage.
Another area we've experienced growth in is our special education student population. Over the last nine years, the population's grown by 190 students. And the other aspect in the numbers is that special education students have an IDP, and the expense may vary from year to year based on the students' needs and required services. Or we've seen growth in higher needs of those as well. And we're looking for market services and the state market, so to speak. This is always pointed, we speak on this and our needs for the reason.
Captain, Madam Chair, and Mr. Thor, and Dr. Heron. One of the things we'd like to point out, this chart that wants us to point to you, that you do see a linear trend here where we have some ups and downs, but it's good to know that the past three years, it has been a steady increase for a total of 192 additional students in the past three years. So we anticipate that upward trend will continue. The next slide provides a graphic representation of the percentage of students served in the disability categories established by the state. And it's important to note that just as core teachers must be certified to teach in a specific subject area, special education teachers must have the appropriate certification in order to teach specific disability areas. So for instance, if we have students that are hearing impaired, we must have a teacher that's certified in that area in order to provide the service needs. One measure that we use to anticipate the number of future positions will be needed is to meet the services determined in our students' IDPs with the number of students found eligible. As you can see, the number of students found eligible, there were more than 110 average the past two years. With 24 students found eligible so far this year, that trend is anticipated to continue.
Is 24 a normal number for this number? Could we find if this increases?
Last year was slightly more. It was, I can't say, 119. So it's like, at this point last year. Well, it was at the end of June. We applied that number a month later. So it's pretty...
It was 340, and they've got 215.
Typically, the three months tend to be busier as we go through our process and we work with children and families and child study and put interventions in place, and watch progress on for those to see if those are making a difference. So typically, we will have to give a much higher number of calls starting in March, April, and February.
Does the increase in the special ed population kind of follow the general percentage increase in the general population? So, or, you know, like you see the ESL, even though you're assuming it's because people from other countries are moving in, who don't speak English. So it's an influx of people that are ESL students. But are you seeing, are you seeing a percentage that kind of matches the general population? Because it should, I mean, it should kind of remain the same, right?
And that's actually another number I've been looking at. And that's actually another number I've been looking at.
I'm just curious to see if it's like an anomaly, and there are actually people coming into our district because of the services we provide?
I would anticipate it would be higher, but I didn't look forward to higher. So then we have to do that comparison.
What's my question?
An earlier slide showed the increase in... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Hare, I didn't see you.
Just a quick question. What's the ratio here between staff and social students?
It's done on a point system, and we actually have a future slide worked up and kind of hold a little more detail on that to help explain. Et cetera. An earlier slide did show the increase in the number of special education students served in WJCC. This particular slide shows a related increase in special education staffing. Over the past five years, our teaching staff has grown by 13 and a half positions, while we've also added six paraprofessional positions. And Dr. Hare, I think this will speak to what your question is. Special education has required additional FTEs the past three years. The increase in the number of students served is a primary data point for consideration, but another data point is the actual caseload of our special education teachers, which is established through the SOQ. Caseload limits are determined using a point system established by the state. A student who receives direct services for less than 50% of the day counts as one point, while students receiving direct services for more than 50% of the day counts as two points. Depending on the type of caseload assigned, special education teachers in WJCC can carry between 16 and 20 points. When a caseload gets to 19 to 20 points, it's considered a max for the SOQ. This graphic shows the number of teacher caseloads that we have by level that are currently at or above maximum. So for instance, if you look at the elementary graphic, there are 43 teachers who carry caseloads. 10 of those are either at 19 or above, so they're at or above maximum. And you see, so we have the potential of being over in all three levels.
Dr. Hare?
James County historically funded our special education population with a different model. Yeah, so that's what we're required to do. But we're just going to fund it.
Love that.
I can only speak to my time here. I do know that, and if you look back at the chart that shows FTEs, we did lose teachers in 13, 14 school year, we lost a few positions. At that point in time, we were well ahead of the SOQ department. And when those positions were being assigned, there was still, you would not have seen a graph where you had that in classes at, there was nothing close to that. We did not pare it down to that level. So then the increase has pushed us up to that level.
So great increase in the number of teachers, we're also increasing the level of need that are impacting the points. After looking at the information that relates to our enrollment for special ed students as well as our youth learners, if we deduct the expense of the four special ed teachers, two special ed teachers aides, as well as the three ESL teachers, the cost for that would equate to about $575,000. Deducting that from the previous balance of $4,990,680, we still have $3,550,680 that we use for our additional initiatives. And next, we're going to have a presentation from Evergreen Company that we contracted to conduct their compensation study for the division. And Dr. Heather Tracy, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chairman, Dr. Herron. On behalf of Evergreen, President of Evergreen, we would like to be here to discuss with your compensation review, that we have pleasure working with your staff over the past several months on. Next slide, please. I know your time is limited this afternoon, so I'm going to be very brief. Our process included our initiation and data collection element, our analysis of your current conditions, a market salary survey, as well as recommendations. With regard to the assessment of current conditions, first of all, as you probably know, you have three salary schedules. We did not look at the teacher salary schedule. The study focused on administrative and educational support. Your range spread generally set between 50 to 70% at each category, each grade, is consistent across all salary schedules with a range of 60%. The division's current range spread is certainly in line with recommended best practice. Your midpoint projection, that is, midpoint refers to go from one midpoint to the next, of one range to the midpoint in the second grade, is consistent with an average midpoint progression of 7.6% for both of these salary schedules. In other words, the division's pay ranges have normal progression, which is again important to recognize as we conducted this study. But the meat of the table, of course, was our market survey, which I'm going to talk to you next about. When we went to market, we looked at 65 benchmark positions. 65 benchmark positions between the education support salary schedule and the administrative salary schedule. Okay? We went to market for 21 peers, and including your division, we had 22 peer unique organizations that we looked at. The next slide, I'll give you names of peers. When we went to market on those peers, we had 520 market matches made among the 65 positions. I'd just like to say, you guys owe a debt to the 21 organizations that participated, because they were asked for this between Christmas and Thanksgiving, or Thanksgiving and Christmas, which is a very crazy time to try to get all the staffing. So we applaud their efforts. Overall, division salary ranges, what do we find overall? This is in a nutshell, 2.4% below the market average minimum. That means your positions as a summary are 2.4% below the range for the 21 other organizations at minimum. At midpoint, at the midpoint within a range, you're 3.6% below the market midpoint average. And at maximum, you're 4.3% below market average at maximum. Okay? So in each case, you're below market for those two salary schedules. Where do we go at? Again, forgetting your own 21 other school districts, as well as others, and other organizations where you compete for employees, especially in very education support services. You compete for custodians, you compete for secretaries, et cetera, from the city of Williamsburg, from Colonial Williamsburg, from Jay City County Government. Okay? We looked at York County Government, and most of the others are school systems within your regional area. Okay? Well, we had great participation, we've got a lot of readings. Some bus drivers with custodians, what principals, what assistant principals, yet painting up the jurisdictions. Obviously, folks that don't have principals and don't have assistant superintendent respond to the survey, but they did respond to the positions that they have affected. Recommendations. The recommendations we made your staff were designed to bring you to market and ensure external equity for all classifications in the two salary schedules. The implementation costs were calculated for fiscal impact, and we provide cost impact to your staff for various pay options, which will be addressed by the division in subsequent slides. Let's say very briefly. Any questions for me before we talk about numbers and money?
We're actually looking at several options for salary increases. As you've seen, our salaries fall below the starting average. So we've considered the above salary increase scenarios for all employees to improve and maintain the validity of our salary scales and avoid compression. Above illustrates the cost for an average 3% raise. The first provides for the re-rating, and the cost would be $3,087,466. And all of the figures in each of these slides actually do include the expense for Pythagorean and Egyptian arithmetic system. The second provides for an average 3% salary increase without the re-rating at a cost of $2,347,166.
Did you like to explain this?
Sure. There are certain positions that are significantly below in terms of the market, and we recommend to re-rate those positions. For example, your bus drivers.
Oh, okay. So some will be 87% to get them up.
Exactly. Some are at market, so we're not recommending.
Gotcha. There were 345 employees that were out of line, and 80% of them were class drivers, cafeteria workers, who, cafeteria workers are not included in this because they're in a separate fund. But class drivers, cafeteria workers, and custodians, 80% of them. But a cafeteria worker, they're just in a different fund, so they're also with the 19,000.
So the average 3% increase for all other staff. All other staff being, all other staff, right?
Yes, sir.
So that would be teacher assistants, that would be bus mechanics.
Yes, sir.
All other staff.
All other staff.
Substitute teachers.
No, there's not, we don't currently have one substitute.
What about substitute bus drivers?
We've got another slide for the substitute bus drivers.
I think the general law is that the 3% would begin to address a lot of the issues behind market following of our salaries. Recognizing, of course, that other systems will be an increase this year as well. So at best, we just don't fall behind.
Correct. Last year, we gave a 1.5% increase. Everyone else relied on giving us 2%, kind of the old, give 2% or 3%.
You can't give 3%.
Maybe it was 3%.
What is the pay for the substitute teachers?
There are two other options for consideration. One is your favorite within the paper substitute teacher. These are just options to be consideration. The one I, I think, top one is the average 2.5% and plus the re-rate, and that's 2,694,834. And the second one is for just an average 2.5% increase without the re-rate. The next one, maybe 954,593.
They have different rates for the substitute teachers. If there's one in 10 days of service, it's $80 a day. If it's 11 to 20 days, it's $90. The 21 to 89 days is $1,500 a day.
Do we have a word with Genesee County's doing, has done like a similar thing, and it might be doing those re-grading, or do you have any idea what they're looking at?
Oh, do you? We're actually doing that stuff, and we're further ahead than they are. We're still working through various scenarios with budgeting. I would expect a report would be available within a month.
Go for it. Like a 3% and then they're doing a regrade at 4% or whatever.
All right.
And this is obviously still a conservative approach with 3% being the top possibility. We're looking to show you sense for the board as to what it is.
Which percentage is that 30,000?
East half.
Right in the half.
Yes, sorry. So on this one, we're actually looking at the average 2% and plus the re-rate, and that's 2.2296,284. And you may have heard that the governor's budget is actually proposed to 2% raise for all state employees. However, the proposed budget running in that as of December of 2017, the second year of the pandemic, and it only provides about $330,000 for this SOQ number. And so the bottom is just the 2%, the average 2% exactly rate. And that's how many, 566,659.
And so what if, like after we were looking, you know, we had $3 million, something around there, what was the last?
3.5. That's what, 3%. What's the budget increase? Then it goes to 2.5, according to the budget. 2%. Now, each slide is taken in time just to give you a sense of the overall impact. And this is just a staff, which there's no increase, it's not changing, or something. It just keeps, just a little bit, each step. Anything less than 1.5%, which is going to increase the depression who would be faced with a war zone and then the war turns off now.
Question. The administrative staff, in the past, whoever raises teachers', ministers', is that built in? This isn't built into the figure, is it?
Yes, sir. This is all the board.
Just because it says teachers, that means?
Yeah, and then it says 1.5% increase for all other staff. The only reason we separated teachers is so that you could see that it was a staff plus a salary increase.
Regarding the regrading, I know you embarked on this study because you were experiencing issues, but let me just, I want to reiterate that. So without the regrading, would this division stand to lose people who jumped to those other 21 agencies or other? I mean, is that what you've been seeing, bus drivers leaving, other?
We do have staff in those.
Yeah, so in real life, you're seeing people leave for a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's across the board because other systems are... I think we showed, Mr. Baker brought a presentation on teacher salaries, and we saw that we were falling low in the pack in the region in that, and that we don't, everybody is there, but for a public that we lost in the region. And we're going to start to send you that information again.
Just wanted to confirm we're actually experiencing, you know, the public to hear that.
At this point, we would like to get some input from the board. I want to ask this over to Captain Smith to take over for you.
Get to stand up to the panel about that. We've got an envelope. It has your name on it, and a dot in the corner. You have, for the first activity, one of the non-numbered dots. Would like you to place it on your favorites over here, and this is all based on salary options. And if you would just pick one of the salary options you prefer, and the non-numbered dot. One, one dot.
I did have a question with this process. Like, I don't know what we are, we're voting on our choices here, but based on our choices here, like if we go with a 3%, then we have less money to choose the other options. And I don't know what those other options are, so I guess it's too late. This is the way we're doing things, but it seems a little...
Premature.
Premature. Am I the only one that feels that way?
Well, certainly, if you did change your options based on the rest of the information, you could certainly do that. It's just to give a general direction about where you would like to, what you would like us to bring forward as a potential salary. us to, to bring forward as a potential salary. Just the first, just the first question. And we typically do this because budgets, you know, more than eighty percent budget turns around, or we're all around eighty to eighty-six percent, uh, salary.
Just for the listening public, it seems that the, um, all of the board would like a re-rate, um, and three members of the board would like a three percent increase, and four members of the board would like the two and a half percent increase.
And I was like, and those two, those two and a half is not particularly, you know, the support group that I know there are. But if you got one, that's essentially right.
I would love to get it. What the ballot assumes that that, that, that number is guidance, where the first or second plan is about a budget of need, so.
And I think it's fair to say, a lot of work with the jobs here, when everything we bring forward tonight, not everyone makes more of their money. And so there will be a total tonight that will far exceed what's, or certainly exceed the sum of what's being proposed in the, at the, uh, part of this conference. Okay, good, well, thank you. Over, bye. Okay. This, this brings us to, um, options relating to our health care. The total increase for health care coverage, we're expecting a seven percent increase, and the, the total cost is equals $1,394,862. However, if you subtract the spousal surcharge savings of $382,200, the net increase is $1,12,662. So it's been the, um, it's been the history of this board to cover the seven percent increase of the employer, and so that actually comes down to, you've got the $1,778,630 less spousal support. That brings you down to the net employer increase of being $695,662. Um, the employee increase, the seven percent for that is, is $316,999. So the two combined is the one that is $12,662. So if you give me a moment to consider health care, and give us some sense of whether you want to, you're going forward with sharing the seven percent increase between employer and employee? Um, whether you want the division trying to cover everything, or if you want us to look at other potential options for cost sharing?
Just to be clear, we absorb the entirety of the, of the, um, increase, the million dollars.
Right.
We split it, it's like that.
It's less, it's almost six, eight, five, six, six, two, five, please. Anybody?
So, so what you're showing here is two percent. And, and like this complicated question, how much do you split it, as far as what employees pay versus what we pay?
Well, right now, you pay, well, take that seven percent.
But I'm talking individual points, pretty.
Um, Mr. Baker probably has all that information, um...
That would be...
It's here in the plan as well.
And the employee only plan, we're currently, uh, school division paying eighty-eight percent, and employees paying twelve percent. The abandoned plan, uh, employer, we're paying, say, seventy-eight percent, and employees paying twenty-two percent for the, uh, K-10. For some of the other plans, like the high deductible plan we have, um, for an employee only, we actually, employer actually pays ninety-seven percent of the cost, and employee pays three percent. For abandoned, high deductible, uh, we pay ninety-two percent of the cost, and employee pays eight percent. We feel we have a very good plan, we have very good rates. We actually, comparable plans like our high deductible plan compared to the, to the county government, we actually have a better rate of products, uh, than their comparable product. We actually get it at a better rate. How do you, to, to, uh, schools, correct, like, for the, uh, comparing like us, the York County schools for the family, with our family in Down, we're paying, the product itself costs about a, about a cost of $1,800 per month, and the employee, we're paying seventy-eight percent of the money. But the York County schools for their health insurance in Down, actually they're paying $2,163. So for a single product, we actually have, um, a product that has a better rate, and we're sharing about seventy-eight percent.
Do we, do we know, um, different than what you're telling me, the employer is funding? Is their split about the same?
Correct. Their, their splits are about the same, but their product costs more, and so they're paying more. Their employee is paying for health insurance and dental combined, they're paying $1,682 a month, and our employees are paying $1,400, uh, I'm sorry, the employer is paying $1,132 a month, and we're paying, uh, $1,462 a month, so they're, they're sharing about seventy-eight percent to their employee.
And so do we know if, if counties surrounding us are, have similar increases coming?
I think they're actually, I'm hearing more. Uh, you know, last year we had zero increase, the year before we had a 1.4 percent increase. Uh, and then last week, Monday and I were talking, we're hearing, they're actually greater increases of, um, twenty-one percent.
So do we know how their plan to vote that? Are they going to split it with their employees?
I don't know. So the, so the seven percent is, is a real limit to keep that conversation to our provider of, is that an estimate?
Correct.
As you want us to.
Yeah.
It's pretty damn close.
Could you send us the chart that includes employee only, employee plus kids, employee plus spouse, and then family, with what it costs and what we pay and what it takes? I think, if memory serves, two years ago, we decided to move away from talking about in terms of percentage, but in, in actual dollar amounts, and what we're, what we're contributing, uh, in terms of dollars for each of those levels, for each of the three plans. And so I'd like to see that, um, and then maybe, rather than, although it's helpful to know about cost sharing with the employee, we can then look at what we contribute and then decide how much if I need to increase that. Does that make some sense?
I think what you're saying, like, right now, our 250 plan is, is the most expensive plan, and then the worst reasonable plan, cost-wise, we, we, the school division pay the same regarding, so I think the employee wants to pay a higher, you know, higher plan. They're paying a different.
Right.
So like for us, for the employee, the, uh, 250, uh, plan is, it costs a school of $610 a month. For the 500 plan, it also costs a school of $610 a month. The additional money is on employee, they made that choice.
Right. Yeah. Does the percentage then change it for all, for all sixteen iterations of the program?
Correct.
So it's just...
Yeah, I think, could you also include the number of employees each time? So just pick a day, do it right first, or whatever, just how many employees are on each plan, and so...
We have that.
We know.
Hold that.
Okay. Little spreadsheet there.
It is, it is. I'll find it, but, um, Chris Smith sent it to us.
Yeah, we have.
We need it. Remember that I came up with the...
Thank you.
Is there a recommendation of, right, so, so when we look at benefits, it's always been the case, I think the WJCC has really great benefits, but then our, our, um, salaries might not be as high. So where do you, you know, do you have good benefits, but you, you do the 2.5 and then keep related benefits and cover the cost, or would the teachers themselves, the staff themselves prefer, I'd rather have them more money and decide what I want to do with mine, whether I have a high deductible or not? And, and, you know, is that something that the, the staff themselves would like the control, like, they have more money, and they can control what they want to do with it?
I think it's very difficult to know whether, I'm guessing, Mr. Baker, the public are more knowledgeable on this than I would, that, um, probably, um, staff would want more money in their pocket because they're less likely to face family, um, other health issues, I think, as, as our staff, you know, change it is, depending on how, um, and the parents of health, um, and have a family, or, or have a good health insurance, if that will impact the budget of all. So I would guess it really depends on the individual question sort of...
And we have enough options on health insurance to make, how to make the decision as far as which plan to choose. But I just want to make sure, what I want to understand is, if I give a two and a half percent rate, how much of that is going to an increase in health insurance, and will they actually see an increase in take over there, so?
And we can, we can do some scenarios for the, for the board, again, depending which health option you're choosing.
Right, a lot of that, you know, but this could, yes, were, and population there's those will help us to be, help guide us to that.
Any other information that you want to follow, please?
Just, just on health insurance, my going in is that everybody increases the same amount. So that, that's my personal, so that, so that if, if, if it's going to go up a hundred percent, we pay eighty percent versus ten percent, it goes up in the same, you did in, scenario, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's clear. So, okay, so if, if, uh, right now, our lowest plan, we have eighty-eight percent and twelve percent. So the employee pays eighty percent. Yeah, the employee pays twelve percent, we pay eighty-eight percent. So if the, if the plan is going up seven percent, or seven, has it been up 10 bucks, we take eight point eight of that, and they take one point two of that, equal.
So what we did two years ago, we shifted to a fixed amount, that then the employee could buy up. So the percentage shifts depending on what plan the employee does. So, so the percentage then would have to be, let's say, we're making up numbers, we say we're, we need to be $500 a month, and if we decide to make that 600, then that's what's equal for everybody.
Or the mother is up seven percent.
Right.
By, by, you know.
So the points are in, uh, some scenarios, um, provide to the board, so you sense of where we can make a couple, thank you for your... In the previous slides, we, we discussed and included the cost for the special ed teachers, and if we're needing new requirements, special ed positions basically non-vouchable. Um, we've also included, we're requesting an additional FTE for behavior intervention specialists, and, uh, maybe, Scott will have the mic, see if he can address this.
Um, regarding the behavior intervention specialists, this is a requested new position. Um, it is one of the recommendations that came from the Special Education Advisory Committee, and it had to be a report to the board on the end of last school year. This position would support our classrooms that have a high number of people concerned, um, and that does include all the key classrooms, all autism classrooms. Additionally, it would provide training for staff on things like what are appropriate intervention strategies, how to develop an appropriate behavior intervention plan, and an infant net plan, and what's the proper strategy to like deal with that. Um, it would also provide quantitative services, um, support to schools where individual students may be, uh, additional support or interventions. Finally, that strategic thing as well, we, we have a focus of share on FPSS, um, disproportionately in discipline, and this would be a resource that would be effective, especially to specification to, to impact some of the potential, what you have to do with your coaching, for your challenges, and so just a strategic request as well.
But this position just applying to special ed teachers, teachers, especially, I don't know if it's a deal, to make their ed teacher.
This certainly could be, be, it would provide a, a resource. Um, I think, I think the challenge would be from the workload, with, with 1,700 special ed students, obviously, if I said most of these were before the COVID, it would be...
Do you have any other major intervention specialists in the process of that?
We know, um, the, it's a fairly normal position in, in other systems, in larger systems in particular, where they can go to the need where the issue is, and actually help the teachers create environmental students come on. It's a resource that really is there for teachers, students, needs.
So 350 is basically to our non-vouchables.
No, that's one of the, as you recall earlier, I'm saying that it would be non-vouchable, but it's not included as one of those. Earlier in the other slides, we listed the, the four special ed teachers and two special ed teacher assistants.
So the first teacher's going to be a little off.
Maybe, maybe, how, based on our choice.
Yeah. Based on the trend, we've shown you the previous years, if you look at the number of teachers who died, and then you have just under the cap of the max, so it keeps that forward this way. Right. So with those numbers, you know, we're still very, when we, when that went right until a percent of our budget, they could go up or, or down, perhaps, or, or it looks like right now. Um, if the number of teachers and assistants change, you know, the intervention specialist would be a, a very powerful resource, so.
This, um, intervention specialist, as like a high temperament, that goes around as a, like, admin, but, you know, putting out the fires wherever they are across the corrupt system, corrupt. I mean, we prioritize that based on, on that, since we have, and we know the red areas and so, but they absolutely...
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. First of all, it's my understanding that, um, each of these special ed teachers are specialists, and so he's a generalist or, um, one or two specific categories. The behavior intervention specialist is, is, is that somebody who is, you know, knowledgeable about all of the categories, or they lean more towards the ED category? How many kid, that's a bunch of questions. How many kids are we talking about? Because I know the other big area that I, that's, I know our board representative is concerned, is the growing number of discipline issues, um, presented by students who are not in a special ed category. And I'm, I'm really concerned that, um, there's, there really needs to be a need for, um, a behavior interventionist to deal with those, because I don't have the numbers. I don't think, you know, I just don't know, you know, whether there are six kids in this school, or two and a half, where, you know, where are the issues coming up? And, and I want to get the most bang for the buck. So, yeah, I, I like, you know, I like to know, in terms of numbers, how many students are talking about? And, and I know we can't project, but in the past, like last year, how many, if you'd had a behavior intervention specialist, how many students would have that? And I don't want it to say all students. I mean, specifically, there are, there are students that exhibit behavior that obviously interfered with, with the classroom, students, the teacher. Is it a small number, is it a large number, or is this person going to be a generalist and help all teachers or?
So, you can, yeah, those numbers for the boards and for, um, certainly, in special education classes, as long as it doesn't make the students, they're liable in those numbers. We wouldn't do it by school or by program, but we could certainly give you a sense of a number, all significant situations that this person could have...
Yeah, that's right.
...this year, not looking to forge some good information when we're concerned with this.
And of course, I also, you know, I know, you've got the ministry, it's an over incidence by the other students who aren't in any one of those categories, that we hear about all the time, like, what's being, you know, what are we, what are we doing, what are we anticipating? Doing some kind of future...
A lot of time, and so I'm going to start to pick up the pace just a little bit, so we get through all of the, the things we want to consider this evening. This is another strategic request, to add three additional FTEs, college and career coaches, One Bridge High School. Dr. Carroll presented a... Dr. Carroll presented a couple of weeks ago on the profile of a graduate and all of the expectations that come along with our new graduation requirements for students. These positions would not be your regular sort of counselors, would not have that kind of role, they would actually be developing business partnerships, creating internships, creating job shadowing opportunities, mock interviews, all of the things that we need to start to orchestrate and get our students ready for college and career. So this is a huge piece of the puzzle for us to move, enable and actually make some of those things happen that are required and I think we want to make our students ready for the world of work. And I think one for each high school.
I was just going to say, with the needs, with the special ed needs, as Paula was about to describe, the needs that we have for the ESL teachers. So the three ESL teachers were placed 235,000. We're also looking at an additional half of an FTE for kind of coordinator, social studies coordinator position, who would like to make full time.
Prior to going on, I just wanted to correct a data point that I spoke of earlier, and this is just a testament to why people up to 55 need to use a bigger font. While I gave you the numbers of level one, two, and three students, I gave the total numbers, but I can't make work specifically asking about high school in this call. So I can give you the corrected numbers, level one students at high school are 39 students. Level two at high school are 39, and level three at high school are 39.
I think it was Mr. Kelly, if I can, my buzzer is to your 12th. There you go, reading glasses for bigger font. Okay, currently, social studies is only one of two content areas and the only core area that does not have a full-time coordinator. The 2.5 coordinator position is responsible for K-12 social studies curriculum, instruction, and professional development. Additionally, the social studies coordinator is tasked with working with teachers to use the assessment university process to create common assessments for all grade levels, as well as create the onsite assessments for grades in the state requires, local alternative assessments at the level. WJCC's movement towards a balanced assessment approach in which students are assessed in multiple ways, including paper pencil and onsite assessments, adds additional hours for the social studies coordinator. We currently have at both elementary and secondary level, multiple partnerships with Colonial Jamesburg, Jameson, Lordson Foundation, Lord's, Yarke, and Revolution, and these all provide onsite experiences for our students and project-based learning opportunities. In order to expand this movement, need additional hours for the social studies coordinator. Social studies coordinator also oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Program, giving direct assistance to teachers who are attempting to gain this certificate certification, as well as arranging for local and national funding. And as we, as our focus increases on project-based learning, the social studies coordinator will need additional time to facilitate writing of PBL that aligns curriculum and provides cross-curricular connection with other core content areas. So in light of the fact that over time, duties of coordinator have expanded, there are additional responsibilities due to VDO mandates, and the number of schools in WJCC has increased, I believe that there's a significant need for 2.5 additions to our 30.
Thank you, Seth. Right now, is this person doing part-time this and then part-time doing something else, or just?
Part-time.
So she is, she is just a part-time worker.
And you said, there's more than one coordinator that's half-time, right?
Correct.
And in those, are going to stay half-time?
Well, there's only one other coordinator that's half-time, and it's probably, probably needs to be full-time as well. So what recommendation to increase our ESL teachers to three, that gets us to 15, 15, does it to 17, so we're not in the point system?
Well, we're still thinking the point system, it's just that increasing the total number in one year would be significant, and that's obviously for broader, broader at the mall. It would be closer, I don't know exactly what the ratio would be, seven, one, two, five, five, 15.
Are you required to meet that reach?
You're not required, that's what you just explained.
Special ed is requirement without it's not. So that's why, that's just this request for consideration and see where we.
Now we're looking at our transportation department. Mr. Snipes actually pulled a report on our average weekly hours for bus drivers, and they're currently working 35 hours a week. So what we're suggesting is to change their contracts to 35 hours per week. This will benefit the drivers as well as the division. The drivers will be assured the additional five hours, which will also help the division with scheduling for extra learnings and that sort of thing. But it eliminates too, the time of waiting for that additional pay. The only actual expense for the division, since they already work in these hours, is the additional costs for their, you know, that's just, it was under 13,750 hours. It can be, we can reconcile this on a monthly basis or quarterly. If they didn't work enough hours in one month, they can work more hours the next. Worst case scenario, it can be adjusted with some effect, so they haven't worked the hours they're supposed to work. The only drawback though, is that they will have to pay 5% to the IRS. This helps them in that we're contributing more to their retirement and they're contributing to the retirement, so should they retire, it will benefit, be beneficial as well.
They might see a reduction in pay comp pay?
But they won't, they wouldn't have to wait on it. Right now, they're having to wait till the next month, and all the timesheets are turned on to the secret pay. Calculating, probably 13 hours a month.
Again, it's a consideration, it's something we would talk through with us drivers and them, it's something we would make optional, I suppose, for those who want to opt into it, because it does create some stability when drivers are getting a pay that helps with that with monitoring lack of money that they aren't getting because of the paycheck month, and it's helpful that it should.
I'm still not going to get too.
We don't have a staff, but this is a way to standardize if they're not getting on the entry.
So we pay, we pay DRS for the first 30 hours. So this would be the additional DRS for the five hours.
If we regrade and give a raise, it might not be a lot of that.
Well, the additional five, the additional five hours of getting more money for that. It's just the.
And then we're also looking at increasing substitute driver pay by 50 cents. So is that far, anywhere near far?
Actually, a good salary, right now they're at 12.6, so that puts them at 12.76. I'm sorry, they're 12.76.
You were at 12.6.
And that's comparable.
Okay, we've a moment to, we'll have to maybe try to equip this time when Muslim comes to this committee, so we're done.
So, Senator Allo, you have one section of dot system 137. There are seven options in this area, so if you could prioritize 12.7 and put the corresponding number. One, one, stop. It looks like the option of the most number ones is to increase bus driver contract hours to 35, it receives five number markers. Next in that category would be pre-plussed to be driver paid, most two. Staffing adjustments, one, one, two, three, four, a six, and a seven, this involves. This one, behavior intervention goes from two to six, a number, a good number of two. College care counselors, all of the place, one person said one, and there are two sevens. ESL teachers primarily a number five, or four five. Thanks for doing that.
Moving on quickly, thank you for your input and stopping.
This first area actually covers transportation now on the other budget priorities. In transportation, we have three vehicles, a 999 traffic tour unit has over 160,000 miles. A 2002 Impala with more than 110,000 miles, and it makes the ealing, and it's costing us lots of people. And then another Impala, 2003, with 68,000 miles on it, and we'd like to replace them with minigayons on the 700 streets, which the cost for the three minigayons is 68,940. Buses, as you know, our original replacement schedule indicated that we would replace 12 vehicles, with high disrepairing, and so that the division would be hit so hard in certain years. And so it will consist of, I mean, how many buses, 10 buses a year, so. We replaced four with a year-end spending plan this year, so that leaves six to be replaced. And as you know, anything that's replaced, we pay more of the operating fund, and if they're new buses or additional buses, we can pay for that as a separate fee. Let me see, the cost for the six buses is 660,000. Then regarding the bus lifts, they were purchased in 2011, and the age of the lifts creates safety issues. They recommend that you change them after 15 to 20 years, or 25,000 cycles, or hours on the cycle counts, counters on them. So, and they're wanting to be 17 years old, which is the two that we're reporting. So the cost to replace those is 53,100.
Subject next. This is what we're talking about here. Did you tell me the number for bus lifts, is it just one bus? It's two, two. So removal, we didn't use last tank, but we may end up using this tank, or I'm sure, actually, I'm still trying, but something is not currently in the budget, we're not possibly have it in this.
Kind of, kind of a joke, not a joke for me, because I just heard that Mr. Snipes has asked for the solar rule, and so I get a little tickled by that, so. But anyway, he's asked that that be returned to the budget, and as you know, this doesn't cover the cost, total cost, but that is a cushion at 125,000. So I mean, I guess if we weren't having the snow, but we can realize. Then we're also looking at increased cost of study supplies, grounds care, and also utility, particularly fire, and so that's, that's the.
Moving on, there's some other special education costs that are not the only, but we're putting them up, so if you understand.
The special education part of placement. As well as services that are currently made for, for each of the students next year.
Do you want us to vote on those even though they're non-negotiable? I don't think you're on your voting list, are they? Okay, we'll count them, we're probably not going to vote on them. Okay, this one's next one is really all to do with equity and high school programming. With a number of students involved in the area of college, we'd like to increase that to a maximum of 50 students with 50 at each school, and to do that, we're requesting $50,000 to do that. And we see the initial testing services, those are paying for certifications for students in CTE classes, that's also paying directly on the profile of the graduate and essential classes. The other piece to do with program equity and finance is this one. Is that actually next one, okay? Okay, let's go with this one then, back again. Proposing to introduce probably the direct off with high schools, this minimal startup costs per course, we would obviously offer and then only young ones courses that make in the high schools, for new teacher, for tomorrow, we do, for tomorrow's program, with minimal cost that any teacher can teach, and a certified can teach to begin to grow and deeper from students in our system, we would propose starting out of all three high schools potentially. This does not include staffing costs, because we think we can actually reuse staff and have them certified to use these sources from our current staffing. This is just materials for startup. Going by, I may ask Mr. Ostad to speak to the concussion protocol, get a line, share a place.
Leading the chair, Mr. Ward, super ten. We have been analyzing concussion protocol from other school divisions around Antimatter area, and we've noticed that we have some deficiencies, and what we view currently and what other school divisions do, we look specifically at Virginia Beach, that's a very extensive concussion protocol, and we have modeled what we see there in terms of estimated cost. That would catch us up to what Virginia Beach is. That would catch us up to what Virginia Beach is currently doing. So what we currently do is we provide baseline testing for all freshman and juniors that participate in high-risk sports at the high school level. We do not provide baseline testing for junior school students, and we do not provide any emergency medical care or training services to middle school competitions. And so that eleven thousand one hundred dollars will essentially provide baseline testing for all middle school students, all seventh grade middle school students, and eighth grade students that did not participate in the seventh grade, that are participating in high-risk sports. For us, all of our middle school sports are considered high-risk sports. And then it would also include increased testing at the high school level. They would essentially test all students that participate in what they consider high-risk sports, which is basically everything except for swimming and tracking field events that are running. So field events would still be considered high-risk sports. And so every student that participated in any of those activities would be baseline tested. We used the stipend that we currently have for substitute athletic trainers at the high school level. We use that amount, which is fifteen dollars an hour, and we basically projected out how many home competitions each middle school we have, and that's how we handle that.
It's a minimum cost, and probably something that shouldn't be included. If you did the same way, you can, you can be on the voting list.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. I'll just quickly mention the cost thing with a lot of interest in the cost, this is a minimal startup cost, with recurring costs as well. There's some forty thousand eight that are actually recurring, other start-up costs from the sixties to back to the. That does not include travel, I believe, is that correct? Excellent. And the travel would be significant, because there are no teams in the areas traveling to home and road to Richmond from across. But we did, we put on a research, we've done a lot of work on it, there's a lot of interest in the community that we wanted to bring to the board for consideration.
But with three, is it just three high schools would be?
Maybe, maybe. To complete, they would have to contribute. I think also.
How are we talking to?
Well, that's four games, but they were looking for a, I think typically it's twenty game schedule.
So really, if we do, we want to do it well, if we're there. Anyway, for your consideration on your list, also metal detector operation, this is for personnel to run the metal detector, to walk the metal detector games. And then we don't have enough staff to cover those currently on site at games, and there hasn't been a element that we want to. It's another security measure that we're wanting to use. Do you follow that's a valid belief?
We're all in that spot.
One other consideration. Moving on quickly, we talked about Project Lead the Way, and for the management, we're ready. I think the final one, going ahead.
I'm sorry, I had a question about lacrosse.
Sure.
Actually, a comment. It's certainly something that I commented about lacrosse last year. I know there's a lot of excitement about starting up a sport. There is equally a lot of excitement when we started out wrestling quite a few years ago. The facilities for our wrestling programs are atrocious. I have spoken to coaches, I am on app, and I've seen those, and it's just really hard for me to allow another sport to start up, when we haven't really done a good job of maintaining the facilities for those kids, those teams, because they are attached. Can I, can I chirp at that? Go out tomorrow morning afternoon, five thirty, we'll have to be at all gates, and the work will have to, have to wrestle. So I, yeah, I play both sports. I know initially lacrosse is going to be cheaper, because you don't really have to have a facility unless you start practicing year-round, and you need indoor facilities. So it's just, it's a caution about lacrosse, but it's also, I'm also making a request that we look really seriously at the conditions of the practice cities for our three wrestling teams.
No problem at all. Hold it.
We actually have bought them business from full implementation on the risk, because
the purchase down cost, it wasn't in the current budget. So I mean, we have the resources, we just have to make it happen before it's getting severe.
Mr. Lowers, I think we've got the way to speak to the additional business of dollar instruction.
Leading the chairman, this is board. This request is to support a retro learning program in a couple areas. The first would be to add review and modify courses based on student requests, as well as guidance and teacher recommendations. New courses that will be created during the fall of two thousand and eighteen, including two more large courses. Exactly which language, which languages will be determined after the current three courses completed later in the spring. elective courses to be added would be information technology, as well as computer information systems, and a mathematics course that also will be later defined after a moving to the skeleton take place in February. Course review and auditions would include our economics and personal finance course, algebra one and two, geometry, world history one and two, world geography, and English on ten, eleven, and twelve. Additionally, this request addresses a replacement of content that is currently provided by Compass. This vendor has experienced a buyout recently, so Compass will now move away. We are reviewing the same content provided through another vendor that is on state contract to our actual pilot that comes, coming semester. The request is based on an estimate using their price list, you know, on state contract.
How many students are you doing for the four seats?
Well, fairly online, in this current semester, we have a hundred and ninety-six individual students that have taken nine, two hundred and forty-one courses. This also supports our blended instruction. Blended instruction, we have two hundred and twenty-three courses that are showing approximately one thousand six hundred and fifty-six students.
Finally, this is for evaluation services. Very quickly, talk for those.
Okay, very quickly. Good afternoon. Measuring the impact of our programs and what the impact is on students continues to be a real priority for us. This budget request would be for comprehensive program evaluation services, and based on the request of the board, and funded, the very first program evaluation would be James River Primary Year's Program, International Baccalaureate Program.
Okay, we have one other slide that is not in the voting piece tonight, just for five minutes. Let's do, let's do the priorities first. And we are running through the wire, so we're going to have to very quickly all your priorities on this one.
So now you have eleven, you know, in eleven dots, which is a concussion off the table. So just like before, if you would put one through eleven, you'd eleven.
Do you like a shortcut?
Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? Do you like a shortcut? We've got about three minutes left in our budget session. So I was supposed to tell, hold it, we're going to go to your last and final slide. This is one thing we did want to revisit as part of the discussion, CIP. We talked, the board already had a discussion about two new trailers at Jamestown High School. The rental cost is there, it wasn't included earlier in the budget, because it's not the youth requested money, because three trailers are actually being taken off Berkeley for building up a new middle school. So with adding to it Jamestown and taking three away at Berkeley, it would be twenty thousand dollars less this year. However, if we were to add trailers, obviously the savings would be greater. So it's how we presented, we, you know, generally when this happens in a budget, it's an opportunity cost, and that's not what we talked about in budget priority meetings. But I did want to bring it up, because it was a significant discussion that we worked before. So I don't know if you want to revisit, or if you have any thought or direction on this piece of the puzzle.
Will it be the same trailers, just transferred from, to transferred from Berkeley to Jamestown? Or will they be different?
Should we do the last slide, and then we'll come back to us in a second?
Oh, we do want to summarize. I think summarizing, people like them both, it's going to be really, yeah.
While we finish this, and then we can summarize, and then that's a chance to work out just to give us sense of.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like the people who aren't in the room to be able to see, like, are here. I don't want to tackle that.
Yes, I think. Now, let's go, you want to do this side, or?
Yeah, let's just do this. Yeah, and then, okay. Well, looking at this, you know, with that, from the city's proposed budget, they're providing a six point six percent increase in the local appropriations. So if we covered all of the fundings and the new initiatives and non-negotiables, and included the one course, one of each course for each high school, and did a three percent average salary increase with the re-raid, and the employer portion of the seven percent increase, we would need an additional two point two million, two million, two million without four point four six dollars. So, which would be a nine point four increase in the local appropriation.
Just a big summary number for your consideration. Obviously, we're going to take all your thoughts and consideration after this evening. Going back, as the doubts were being put up on the board, a few members missed the presentation of this slide, which was about the cost of retro trailers at Jamestown High School, if you want to consider this in the mix.
I would just like to comment that if there was an opportunity to not have the cost forward, and then we would not, not follow through with that option. So I like the idea of the cost savings, sixty-two thousand dollars a year, and not having any trouble at all. Since we haven't decided that a gold-forge high school would be advantageous, if we don't know what we're doing, I think we definitely put the cart with the fourth shift to guard trailers this year.
I thought we already talked about that, and I thought the majority of the board supported trailers.
I think, I think there's, I think there's two mitigations, or we spent this one, that it was done without the contextual opportunity cost, which is what this is about. And I also think it was done without, you know, stating explicitly at that time, that there is an extramar process through which the price has to go. And so it's not guaranteed that it will be approved through the legislative body through the land use decision at the planning commission and the board supervisors. So at a minimum, I think it'd be beneficial to at least understand that there might be a sixty-two thousand dollar savings if the trailer's not part of next year's operating budget, which is a separate conversation on this year.
We're talking about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars budget. Kind of like the essence, and I guess why they took to one assuming that you're me.
I think that's everything else. Yeah. Anything else?
No, I think they've already given me the overview of, without all of this, it's obviously a lot of funding, and they're going to increase things in this is, so thank you for giving us your input, and all of the pieces of the puzzle, the design, and that's the last, it's the timeline, you know, but it's our plan to present the superintendent's budget to you all on February twentieth, and just walking through that. I believe there's a joint session scheduled for March the sixteenth, and we'll hold a public hearing, I think there's one, well, there's one this evening, and we'll have a public hearing on the superintendent's budget on March the sixth, and we will hopefully present to you for your approval on March the twentieth, and then we'll be partners in our future.
I have a quick question. The two point three million dollar gap we're collecting and cleaning up, that's best case now, is that correct?
That's if we took everything that's up there.
But from the, from the state, I mean, you know, because the, that's the governor's right. So typically, the governor's budget is best case, is that, is that?
It can be.
It can be.
It can be, right. You know, there are new, there are new members in the house and.
So the legislature's solid.
Right. I have not heard if they put the general something yet, because of what they're working to, if they can cut any more. Does anyone have any, or any comments? If not, I do. One of the things that I think came up in recent conversations with the board is the idea of, you know, we, every school at the high school, middle school level have a fixed administration, a fixed administration number. So the per, per student cost of each school varies depending on the student body there. And it can vary every year. And then there's formulas we heard a lot about today with the LL students and special ed students. But we do not fund in any different or weighted or formularic way for students who come from economically disadvantaged. And I think we need to consider doing that. I think we need to look at the data and what it tells us in terms of student achievement. And I think, you know, as we look at trends and as we realize that the poverty rate has increased at twice the rate of our population growth, that we need to start thinking about that. So I don't know that this is the budget year, but I think a lot of the additions I saw at high school were equally applied, and which is fine, we need that, no problem with that. But I do think we need to start looking at ways to look at student need, given that we know that students' social and economic situation that they're learning at school. And I know that's not our responsibility, so we'll have to adjust to it in the high country.
My comment? Is, is it, so is the responsibility to do that, or is it our governing boards? That they're responsible for all the citizens, not just the students? And so I, I'm not quite sure I understand at all what the school district is for the college debt. Pressing me for sure, I know it's an issue. But I think that that falls under social services and also the government bodies more than under our school system. And it's been charged with being responsible for so many different mandates and issues and challenges. But I completely agree that there's a long, you know, a long-term need for that. I really think that's irresponsible for the worst consequences and state answer. Because we always hear, you know, we hear, well, we're not getting out money and it's because the state's not giving us enough money. You've made that comment many times over the years. And so I guess I would come up with the same kind of comment is why, if this is such a pressing need, why all of, why isn't one of the supervisors in it? So you can step in.
Comment, I, I've heard the teachers' comments, I think that, that this is the school provisioned responsibility to, to fund our buildings based on student need when we have very disparate needs. So we clearly have schools right now that currently have more children who are economically disadvantaged. We have higher numbers of children receiving free reduced lunch. So it makes sense to me to provide more resources to those schools than the schools that have lower free reduced lunch numbers. So that, that's what I heard, and I concur.
I'll, I'll wait until you say that. If that's what you heard, if you had a, if you said, what did you say?
Well, yeah, I just talked about the, the need to look at the socioeconomic makeup of where our students who have, who are more free reduced lunch, to use that as a proxy and provide resources commensurate to that.
Are there data instructional way in support of things that you normally do in the classroom?
Well, that is beyond, I think, the purview of this board to determine how, to determine how, but I think it's a policy decision to say we would like to look at equitable distribution of resources through the, through economic needs as well as we do the special ed and ELL. And although there's a tremendous overlap there, certainly.
Okay, so resources, well, I just want to make sure I understand. When you say resources, you're talking about the resources that the district has or can seek to try to deal with that disparity in a, in an instructional manner? I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I understand about the poverty, but I'm not, I don't know if that's, if we can parse out some of our budget to take care of non-instructional areas? Is that what you're asking for?
No, no, no.
Okay, well, so I'm, I guess I'm confused.
Yeah.
Because you could use the word, you used the word poverty, you used the words socioeconomic. And I totally agree that when there is disparity, we have to come up with the appropriate resources, instructional, school-based resources to help those students. We agree with that.
Yes, sir. I think you guys are just, are. Yeah, I just agree.
I wanted to be very intentional.
Yeah, I just wasn't using language properly, so I apologize for that.
I don't basically disagree with the idea and my own concerns. I think we need to make sure that we're on a legal basis, and I think we need to check the borders and make sure that that would be something that's possible. Because one of the things that the equity series has pointed out is that, you know, if we want to keep things equitable between the schools, then I think we need to think of what is equity between the schools and what are those resources that are at risk? Sometimes I think equity and parity are at odds with one another.
Yeah, I agree with that too. And I think with the last redistricting of high school, all of those issues that, that came out, I think all of us were in agreement that there are certain schools that have more needs than other schools based on the populations that are at those schools. And there seem to be even from the parents of the schools that had low, low need, that they were fine with that. They understood that. They were okay with, with letting the school's administration figure out how to allocate resources appropriately to even the scale of things that. Am I wrong again, huh? But do you guys agree?
That's not a big difference.
I just, I just want that budget retreat to go by that. I'm saying that.
Any other comments? I mean, it's something that we certainly started to talk about and what that would look like and where we would go with that. I think it was the desire of the board to go there. I'm hearing agreement or direction from the board or a conversation to continue it next year. I think my request really is, and I think my colleagues agree with me, is to ask you to invest there. And I think it could happen over time. I think we really need to assess what already is being put into a school that has a higher associate competition and a number of students, a lower, so, you know, says, needs to live with a lot of extra resources there already. We roll a program out into the school before we start looking at formulas by student. And that would be a secondary level of that discussion.
And I just think, also just to add, what the educational opportunities are for our students and making sure that those opportunities are the same regardless of school they go to. That basically regardless of a high school you go to, you go into that school with the same opportunity to, to have different options at your disposal, not, not feel like you don't or you can't do something because your district's into one school over a third school.